Okay, are we all good? So the May 7, 2025 regular meeting of the Downey Police Department Planning Commission, boy that sure went off rack early, will come to order and it's now 6:33 PM. Please rise and would you lead us in the Fox Loop, please?
I'll be, my honor. Everyone, please face our beautiful flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can be seated, but if you guys don't mind if I do a quick invocation on there. Good and gracious God, as always, we want to thank you for the blessings you give us each and every day of our life, our gift of our faith, family, and of our friends. And tonight, as the Planning Commission and as a city staff and our residents, please give us the guidance to do what's right by them, for the wisdom and the fortitude to follow our laws and be fair and justice in our decisions, and for our police and fires, please guide them and protect them as they serve us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, great. May I please have our Planning Secretary Rhea, please call the role?
Commissioner Luhon?
Present.
Commissioner Sakali?
Present.
Commissioner Legaspi?
Present.
Vice Chair Uva?
Present.
And Chair Gera?
Here. So this is the time set aside for oral communications from the Planning Commission. Does any Commissioner want to make an announcement, report, or on a conference meeting, or request items for a future item, agenda item? Anybody?
None for me.
None for me.
Okay, great. Presentations, I believe there's no presentations right now. So does the Community Development Director have a report on the City Council action or any other general updates?
As it relates to the City Council, just as a gentle reminder, I think I might have mentioned at last meeting that we have a vacant lot property ordinance that's being considered by the City Council at the next meeting, and this relates to ensuring that we have a structured framework for enforcing property maintenance standards on vacant lots and vacant buildings. So more details to come. That was a discussion item at the City Council, and that's going to be heard by the City Council more than likely at the next meeting. And then the other item I wanted to share is that the buffer zone discussion and recommendation by the Planning Commission is also tentatively scheduled to be on the City Council's agenda for next week as well, and staff has been working on ensuring that the Commission's recommendation is and comments are well represented in the staff report. So more details to come on the following Planning Commission meeting, but I'm sure most of you will stay tuned to the City Council meeting on those items. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. You know, I just mentioned, we were just talking before, but would you mention it to our city manager and/or our city council? We were talking about the city seal. It's missing, this one here, it's only about three or four years old, it's missing the cross on the church. Our official city seal is right there underneath the carrying, and it's got the city seal, it's on our police officer's patch, and it was, it has a cross. So I think it was probably inadvertently when they did that, but a couple of our fire trucks are also missing it on the seal. So anyways, I don't know how we mentioned it to them, but our city seal is kind of important here where we're sitting behind it, so.
Thank you for letting me know that, Chair Gera, and I will make sure that I pass that message along.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, public hearings, now is the time set aside for the public hearing for PLN 24-00129, the plan sign program. Does the Planning Commission Secretary Rhea have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Will the Community Development Director introduce staff making the presentation?
Yes, this evening we'll have Marissa Montero, our Assistant Planner, presenting this item.
Good evening, Chair Gera, Planning Commissioners, and members of the audience. My name is Marissa Montero, and I'll be presenting PLN-24-00129, the Plan Sign Program for 7375 to 7399 Stewart and Gray Road. The item before you is a request for a plan sign program to establish the size, location, number, and appearance of signs within an existing multi-tenant commercial building. The DMC requires that a plan sign program be heard and considered by the Planning Commission. The slide shows an aerial image of the subject site, which again is located at 7375 to 7399 Stewart and Gray Road, on the northwest corner of Stewart and Gray Road and Old River School Road. The lot is approximately one acre and is developed with a multi-tenant commercial building with 11 tenant spaces. In 2024, the facade of the existing multi-tenant commercial building was remodeled, and the improvement resulted in the need to replace all of the existing signs, which prompted this application for a PSP. And again, PSP is Plan Sign Program. This slide shows the site's current conditions with the facade improvement, which includes new paint and awnings. I'll pause here for a moment. The subject property is Zown Neighborhood Commercial, shown on the map as C1, and has a general plan land use designation as neighborhood commercial. The surrounding land use designations include medium density residential to the north, neighborhood commercial to the east and south, and low density residential to the west. A plan sign program is required for a site having three or more non-residential tenants. The subject property has 11 tenants, therefore the property is required to establish a PSP. The proposal includes design criteria for 12 tenant wall signs, one wall sign each for 10 tenants, and two wall signs for one tenant. The PSP requires the following wall sign criteria. So signs shall be internally illuminated channel letters with an acrylic face, and the lighting has been conditioned to comply with DMC Section 9624 Lighting and Design Standards, which regulates the illumination of all wall signs. The maximum allowed height for each wall sign is 36 inches for one or two lines of copy. The pre-approved fonts and colors are Arial and black or white. There are exceptions for corporate brand logos, colors, and fonts subject to the landlord's approval, and specific limitations, locations, and maintenance requirements for each wall sign are provided within the PSP. So this slide shows the proposed locations for tenants 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 9, and 10. The applicant proposes one wall sign above each tenant's main entrance, and each tenant will have a maximum sign area of one square foot per lineal foot of building frontage. Tenants 4, 5, and 6 are situated in the corner of the building and are accessed through a small courtyard. Above that courtyard is a shared building facade where the applicant proposes three wall signs, one for each tenant. The building frontage for tenants 4, 5, and 6 has a combined width of 20 feet. The combined proposed sign area for these tenants is 44 square feet, which exceeds the permitted maximum sign area of 30 square feet. I'd like to note that a PSP can deviate from the sign standards in the DMC, provided that the total sign area for all signage does not exceed the maximum combined total sign area. For tenant 11, the applicant proposes two wall signs, one over the tenant's main entrance and one facing Old River School Road. The primary wall sign over the tenant's main entrance will have a maximum sign area of one square foot per lineal foot of building frontage. The secondary wall sign facing Old River School Road is proposed to be 55 square feet, which exceeds the maximum permissible sign area of 39.75 square feet. And again, I just would like to note that a PSP is allowed to deviate from the sign standards in the DMC, again, provided that the total sign area for all signage does not exceed the maximum combined total sign area. So as previously mentioned, the applicant is requesting two deviations from the sign standards in the DMC, but deviations are permitted within a PSP, again, as long as the total sign area for all signage on the site does not exceed the maximum. The total allowable sign area for all signs is a maximum of 351.75 square feet, and the proposed total sign area is 287 square feet. I'd like to acknowledge a slight discrepancy between the staff report and this presentation. There were a few typological errors in the table in the report, however, with staff's research and field verification, the numbers have been corrected on this slide. The errors in the report have no impact on staff's analysis, the proposed plan side program remains compliant. Therefore, because the proposed sign area does not exceed the allowed maximum sign area, this PSP complies with DMC Section 9610.04, the regulations for a plan sign Environmental analysis, the plan sign program is categorically exempt from further review under CEQA Guidelines Section 15311. This section consists of the construction or placement of minor structures accessory to existing commercial, industrial, or institutional facilities, including but not limited to on-premise signs. On April 24, 2025, the notice of the pending public hearing before the Planning Commission was published in the Downey Patriot and mailed to all tenants and property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. Staff has received no correspondence in response to the public hearing notice. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 24, 25, I'm sorry, I'll restate it. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 25-4050, approving a plan sign program to establish the size, location, number, and appearance of signs for a multi-tenant commercial building located at 7375 to 7399 Stewart and Gray Road. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does the Planning Commission have any questions of staff at this time?
I have, I think, one or two. I have them in my notes here, if that's okay. Everything seems straightforward and fine. It's just a little thing I noticed in reading our package. On page three of our package, the second paragraph refers to, the PSP requires that within 15 days of a tenant's lease expiring or termination, that the tenant wall sign will be removed and the sign area will be returned to the original condition. I don't see that language, and maybe it's not required, or maybe I missed it, and that's totally fine, but I don't see that language in either the conditions of approval or in the resolution. I see that, a portion of that paragraph under Exhibit A, Conditions of Approval Number Five, where it talks about the maintaining, maintaining the sign and its provision, electrical provisions. So I don't know, maybe it's not required, maybe it is in there and I just missed it? I don't know, I'm just bringing it up because I noticed that.
Yes, thank you for that question, Commissioner Uva.
Okay, no problem.
The, in the plan sign program that was provided to us by the applicant, on the agenda page 17, under D, General Conditions, Number Four, that is something that the applicant has provided to us. It is not something in the code or in the resolution.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then my second question is just something I just want to know, because I don't know what this is. On our package, page 12, the $75 check made payable to the county recorder's office, and the city will use this to file a notice of exemption, what is the notice, what are they exempt from?
For the CEQA determination, yeah.
Okay, got it, just clarification, because I didn't know. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, to piggyback on that, I had a couple, I love the Commissioners' ask, I'm curious though, is that a reasonable time, that 15 days, to get it removed, so tenant just moves out? So is that what we normally do on all our other PSP plans? Or is that, I'm just saying, my tenant just moved out today, I now have two weeks, my sign guy can't get out here, and now I'm in violation, what happens?
Yes, that's a great question. I have to double check, but in our code, it, I believe it says 30 days, that's our standard. But again, I think the language that's included in the PSP, the responsible party for removing the sign is the tenant, so if they know that they're leaving, they should be the ones removing the sign.
Which they're never going to do, right? Because they're leaving.
And again, this was provided by the applicant, so, and the landlord, so I think that's something that they can work out with their tenants, but they can also answer that question when they come up.
Okay, let's make sure, let's ask them. I just wondered, I mean, the 30 days sounds normal, it's just, yeah, and so, I'm sorry, anybody else have had any other questions?
Very straightforward.
I do then, I'll come back to it. So what is, what are they under today, before this PSP plan? What, what program, they had a new tenant six months ago, they put up a sign, so what's the regulations that they're under today before this? And I don't have a problem with it, I'm just kind of curious, looking at other businesses in Downey and so forth.
Right, yes. If a multi-tenant commercial building or center does not have a plan sign program, then they comply with the overall sign regulations. It's typically when we, when something like this occurs, when there's a major facade improvement that results in the removal of all the signs, so we then have them apply for a plan sign program.
Okay, all right. And then like, because I've seen it, we approved one on Lakewood Boulevard too, and so forth, and it's great, they all, you know, it's looking better, the city looks better for that, so. And you said they can change the fonts, this particular one, the applicant chose, you know, the Arial font on there, they can change to whatever they wanted to, as long as it's the applicant's, it's the landlord's discretion?
Yes, so the standard fonts should be Arial, the color should be black and white. We do have an allowance in the plan sign program for landlord approval if there is a nationally trademarked brand or company, so I think it's safe to assume that all of the signs are going to be Arial, black or white, but again, that catch-all of the landlord approval is there.
Is that the same requirement we have for all the other ones in the city, or is that just specific to this one?
When you say all other plan sign programs?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't remember what the signs looked like on the one on Lakewood, I was just, I had lunch there yesterday, but anyways, yeah, is that, or is just this one is, I guess my question is, is the owner of the property, he chose this and wanted to do this, and it's great, and there, so, but could he have chosen something else?
Yeah, yes, of course, yeah.
He could have, okay.
Definitely could have provided more fonts, I think we see that sometimes in other plan sign programs. And then it is typical to have landlord approval just on any sign permit application that we receive, whether it's part of a plan sign program or not.
And is this set precedence on other ones? So another shopping center on, you know, Firestone Boulevard, do they, do they have to kind of follow this? I mean, they're going to work with the city, but another little shopping center like this, does this set precedence that they have to use the same thing?
Like the fonts?
Another new one, or fonts and everything else on there, or is just, each one is separate, each one is individual?
Each one is individual and analyzed separately.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
I've got, I've got one.
Chair, if I may, just also follow up to Chair Gera, I just also want to point out that Condition of Approval Number 16 allows for minor modifications to the plan sign program, so in the future, if the landlord finds that there's, the fonts is very limiting, and I can see where your comments are, what if they want other fonts, or what if it makes sense in 10 years to do something else? That could be submitted to the city as a minor modification to the sign program, and that would be reviewed and processed administratively under director review. So I think that provides a flexibility for that change in the future, should it be needed.
We've come a long ways, that, in that, in this strip center, that was where, the corner one over there where the donuts were, that's where my VHS rental place used to be, 40 years ago, 35 years ago, whatever, I'm dating myself, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Montero, quick question. So I've never seen a tenant relocate and/or leave a commercial space and take their sign with them. I've never seen it. If they're, if they only have 15 days to do it, and they don't comply, what is the recourse as a city? Who's, who's going to, who can we hold responsible for that to happen? If months go by, it's cracked, it looks, you know, old and dated, and it just sits there, do we have any recourse against the property owner? With this proposed PSP and/or, what about the previous arrangement? Has anyone ever been held responsible for maintaining it, if it prolongs months and months without being maintained?
Yes, that's a good question. So in our code, I believe they have 30 days to remove the sign, and I think if that it is not removed, then that's something that code enforcement can, you know, go look at and analyze, and potentially issue a citation to the property owner, if there is no tenant in that space anymore.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, no further questions on there? So before I open the public hearing, call the applicant or the representative, if this would be a good time for the Planning Commissioners disclose any pre-hearing visit sites or pre-hearing discussions that the Commissioners may have had about this project this week? I'll start with my left.
I have none, sir.
I have none?
I have none either.
No, I just, I went to the property and looked at it the other day, just walked around, so, didn't speak to anybody. Okay, so the public hearing will now be opened. Will the applicant or the representative please come forward and give any testimony that you may want to?
Hello, good evening, Mr. Alexis Coleman, I'm the applicant for this project.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to touch base on Mr. Legaspi's question. So typically, like you see sometime, most of the time, tenants do leave their signs behind. Obviously, that, what's in the sign program is set there to kind of just have something and writing, and hopefully, you know, it's followed. This will obviously be given to a tenant when they first move in, so they'll have it from the beginning of, you know, their, you know, their contract with the property owner. But typically what happens, in my expertise, is the new people who go end up taking it down, and that could be an extra cost for the new person, or, you know, sometimes they get lucky and we just remove it, you know, just as a courtesy, and we put up the new sign. That's probably 80% of the time that happens. I don't really see it ever going to great lengths where we have to do code enforcement and stuff like that. We typically would take care of it for the new tenant, and just, you know, patch up the walls and all that.
You know, we hope that you have 100% occupancy in the shopping center, that's, you know, that's everyone's goal. There are a lot more for lease signs and commercial retail space nowadays, for many reasons, we all know. The concern is if it just sits there, right, and someone throws something at it and it's cracked, and it's, there's kids or people passing by from one retail location to the other, do we have, you know, a mechanism just to hold someone responsible if it's made out of material that might hurt someone, as months go by and it sits there vacant?
Right. Well, I mean, just speaking on the property owner's behalf, I'm sure he would take care of it, because he was really nice enough to, you know, do this whole sign program for his tenants and help them out and update everything. So I mean, he's here today, so I'm sure he's hearing this, and I'm sure he'll take care of it, no problem at all, especially if it, you know, it's a safety issue.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further, anything else you'd like to add to it?
No, that's all. Hopefully it gets approved.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being good community people with, I know you guys rent your space there too, the little league for the fireworks every, for the last 40 years too.
Oh, yes, definitely.
That's always, that's always a nice thing for the community, so thank you very much.
Perfect, anytime.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there, can staff, first of all, do we want to close the public hearing now? Or does anybody else want to speak on behalf, in favor or opposition to this? Okay, all right, see no one on there, I will now close the public hearing. Okay, and may staff confirm if there have been any correspondence in favor, opposition to this?
No correspondence.
Okay, great. So we already talked about the, we closed the public hearing. Okay, great. So we already talked about the, we closed the public hearing. So now it's a time for the public, the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, I'm having problems tonight. The Planning Commission to deliberate, or any thoughts on this? I'll start with Vice Chair Uva.
I think this is a great project. I commend the owner for taking this on and improving his property and making the facade of this building look a million times better, so thank you for doing that. I have no other comments.
Okay.
Motion for me.
Commissioner Hector?
Not for me either.
Okay, okay, good, good. So may I have a motion, for, the same thing, I appreciate it, I drive by that spot every day, I only live a couple blocks away. I'd live more than, what's the rules, about 1,000, 1,000 feet? So you guys already looked at it, I'm far enough away, yeah, about a mile and a half. 500, okay, well, I'm about a mile, okay, but it's close enough that I can, you know, go by it every day, but not others. So I'll entertain a motion now to approve this. And by the way, I also want to say thank you for, for taking care of the property, it makes a big difference.
I can move that we approve PLN 24-00129, 29, the planned sign program.
And I'll second it.
Okay. One last thing before, before we vote. I'd like to ask staff, whatever happened with the antenna, the cellular antenna that we were talking about, that we didn't like the ugliness, because this is beautiful now?
I had a very, same question of staff. They've updated me that the applicant has essentially abandoned that project. They have not come in to pursue the changes that, the feedback, to address the feedback that they received at that Planning Commission meeting, which was to make the screening for their proposed antennas a little bit more uniform. So if they wanted to pursue that project in the future, they would have to resubmit essentially a new package. For now, we've tried to touch base with them, but they haven't pursued that, so we're just waiting for them. If they wanted to pursue it, they can reach out to us.
Thank you. We think this is a great project. That antenna was really, really ugly facing that side, so that's why we wanted you to go back to the drawing board, but thank you. Okay, at this time, let us vote.
Motion passes with a vote of 5-0.
Great, great. So the action of the Planning Commission will now be final unless it is appealed to the city council with the appropriate fees for the next 15-day period as set forth in the Downey municipal code. Okay, great. Non-agenda public comment, I can only see back there, I don't see any numbers taken, so I don't believe, is anybody would like to speak on non-agenda public comments? Okay, I see nobody jumping up on there. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar minutes from August 21, 2024? Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Vote yes. We established you can vote on it, right?
Yes, sir.
Because we read it. Okay, all right, so, okay.
Motion passes with a vote of 5-0.
Okay, great. Being no other business, does the Community Development Director have any additional comments for us?
I do. I have some happy and sad news to share. Happy in that, happy to share that Alfonso Hernandez is moving on up in his career. He has accepted a position at a jurisdiction, I don't want to steal his thunder. Sad news is today's his last meeting with us at Planning Commission, so I wanted to congratulate Alfonso on being an amazing team member at the City of Downey before I came here, and the time that I've worked with him has been a great experience for me. I've learned a lot from him. He has a great passion for what he does in urban planning and public administration. He's an amazing mentor to a lot of staff members. He's very patient, very professional and accurate, and I've, congratulations to you, Alfonso, and wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors.
Okay. You want to tell us where you're going, or is this a big secret? We're not going to call your employer and say bad things, we like you.
But we will follow you.
Got it. No, I'm not moving too far away. I'm Bell Gardens.
Oh, great.
Yeah. And if I could, thank you very much, Irma, for the kind words, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and past Commissioners as well. If I could share the experiences I've had in this room and the work that happens behind the scenes has helped me develop into the professional I am today and the professional I hope to be, and the city's working on some great things. So I'd like to say good luck to you in your future meetings and deliberations. For me, the sad part about leaving is I won't have a part in that in the future, so, but good luck to you, and thank you very much.
Well, I've always enjoyed dealing with you. I've asked you tough questions, and you're always very professional, and you take your time, especially with folks like me, so I appreciate you very much. So God bless you, I wish you the best. I'm sorry to see you go. So, okay, anything else, ma'am?
Nothing else, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, anything you want?
It's bad news, it's bad news.
Okay, great, all right. Having done that, I will now adjourn the Planning Commission meeting. Yeah, 7:04, great. Rhea, here you go.